All right, I do hereby call the City Council meeting to order and ask for roll call.
Councilmember Kevin Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Alex McReed.
Here.
President Jennifer Harrington.
Here.
Mayor Pat Seivers.
Here.
Councilmember Jeff Conbaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Dr. David Ball.
Here.
Great, everybody could rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? All right, item number four is the approval of the agenda. Any changes from staff?
No changes at this time.
Thank you.
Actually, there is on the consent agenda. That date on the CMB should be 2026 instead of 2025.
Duly noted, and it's been changed on our.
I would move that we approve the agenda as presented with the change.
Second.
I got a motion second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public comments? Before we get to Sedgwick County, sorry, let's do Chris first. It doesn't matter. She's got a presentation, and I wasn't sure what you had going, so. How are you tonight, sir?
I'm great. I appreciate you guys seeing me and letting me address you, and I hope everybody's doing well. It's good to see everybody. Like the beard? So, my question, well, actually, my neighborhood's question is, we didn't do a lot of research on it because I just found out about it, but it's, first, let me say thanks for the smooth bridge transition. That's awesome. We love it. It's great going across that thing now. And the 45th and Tyler, Eastside, awesome, great. My truck thanks you. So, my question is about the water and the sewage bill going up. When we did the one cent tax increase or how that went, I thought that was for the infrastructure. And as I read that the water and sewage bill going up 15 or 4% or was it 4 and 10%, I believe, is that for the infrastructure as well? Because I got something from the water saying that we're going up. Is that correct?
Go ahead.
Actually, the sales tax is specifically for street infrastructure, tighter, street infrastructure sidewalks and street-related drainage. So, it's not, the water and sewer is a standalone utility, and it has to make its own revenue. And one of the reasons for the adjustment is to be able to handle some of the things we have to do growth-wise and also to be able to make sure we have enough funds to maintain our water and sewer network together. So, those two are not very, they're not really related. One is that they are both infrastructure, but that's not specifically what the sales tax was dedicated for.
Okay, so they're totally for two separate things. That's what I'm, okay.
Right.
I guess I'm not real good at math, but there's 26, 23 households in Mays if I'm getting it off the internet. I mean, I believe everything off the internet, but that's $31,000 a year. Is that right, roughly? If I did my math right?
For what, the increase?
Yeah, for the increase. If you did $12, let's just say it went up $12 for everybody's bill. I'm just doing an average because mine's going to be like 13 or 14, which isn't a lot. And I'm not griping about that. I was just curious as what it's going to because that's only $31,000 a year. That doesn't, I mean, that's not even anybody's a salary or anything like that. What is that paid for? That's not a lot.
Can we answer that?
Okay. You're on a roll.
So, you know, there's several elements to why we're raising the rates. One, the cost of running the water and sewer utility right now, for the last two years, we've been drawing down. We've been spending more than specifically to staff it for maintenance, so those things. So, that amount is continued to actually draw down our funds where we're at. We even made some major adjustments to what we paid out of it to reduce some of that, but it still continues to draw that down. Plus, we have some major infrastructure work that's got to happen in the future. We've got to add a third well site. We're going to be adding a new water tower, and we're going to be upgrading the wastewater treatment plant and the third of three projected steps that we're going to have to do. So, that's probably the big reason, and we've also seen since 2020, we've seen, for example, the cost of water line inflation, it's gone up almost four times what it was back in 2020. So, you've seen a tremendous amount of inflation in the cost of doing some of those things.
I was just curious what it was going to, and a couple of people in our neighborhood were asking. So, I thought I'd come in here because you guys are really friendly to me. I appreciate that. That was it. I appreciate you guys answering the question.
Nick, when was the last increase? Was it three years ago, five years ago?
It was 2020, the 2022 was that last one.
Well, we started doing that study even before I got here in 2020, 2023. So, it's, I know they talked about the study for a long time, and they didn't, they just, we chose not to do anything because we wanted to see what the study would say. So, the study really looked at operating costs and capital costs that were going to come into the future. And that's really what it was, how they came up with the numbers that they had. They actually brought a company come in and tell us what really what it needed to be to be able to cover our costs for those projects.
The way those utility accounts are, the money that allocated for that account can't be used anywhere else. So, you know, what goes into that stays into that group. So, we can't take water fees and use it on streets or anything else for that matter.
Well, thank you, guys. I appreciate it very much. Thanks for your time. Thanks for letting me go first. Appreciate it. Y'all have a good evening. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
All right. Hello.
Good evening. My name is Kinley Zering. I'm the chief deputy for the Sedgwick County Register of Deeds. We wanted to come out here just to kind of let you guys know about two free programs that we have. But I wanted to start off with, what does the Register of Deeds do? Because a lot of people don't know what we do, and we just maintain and record all of the real estate documents. And once we record them in our office, it just becomes the official public record. And our goal is to make sure that those records remain accurate, permanent, and easy to access. I didn't want to take up too much of your time, so. Thank you. Okay, so with the property fraud alert, it's a free notification system, and it lets all of your documents that are recorded under your name to give you an alert via email, text, or phone call, or all three of the above. But it gives you a way to act quickly if something doesn't look right. So, while it doesn't prevent fraud, it'll at least alert you so that way you can get the steps moving. It's really easy to sign up. All you have to do is go to propertyfraudalert.com and choose Sedgwick County and then enter in your information. I promise I know how to do this. Okay. On the next program, it's notary fraud alert. It acts just like the property fraud alert, but we wanted to let notaries know that we have this service. So, if you have a notary and you document, let's say, a deed, you can get your alerts email, phone, or text, and it will let you know those documents have been recorded in our office, and you can actually check that document to see if that's something that you did in fact notarize. The reason why we're bringing attention to that is if you look anywhere across America, notary fraud is increasing. So, in order for us to help keep the public informed, we're also including this. So, they're both free. This one, you'll have to go to our website, and then it'll direct you to the notary fraud alert. And if you guys have any questions, we're just located in the Ruffin Building for right now until we move. But we're open Monday through Friday from 8 to 5, and our phone number is listed on the slide. And I'll stand for any questions if you guys have any.
So, give me an example of property fraud alert. So, I own my house.
So, basically, when a deed is recorded or a mortgage or anything, you'll get alerted because it has your name on there. And it can do any variation. And basically, if you don't recognize that document, then we would put you in touch with the DA to start a case. You'll see a lot of that. That's also been like, have you heard of LifeLock?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's kind of the same thing, but it's free. So, you don't have to pay for this service. You just sign up with your name. And there's not a lot of people that have signed up for this service, and we're trying to get that word out. So, we need your guys' help to make sure that this gets out there. You could sign up your mother or father if they're not tech savvy and have it go directly to your email, phone, text, whatever. But, you know, you can't not, I would recommend doing it because it'll alert you quicker and you don't have to worry about, you know, two, three years down the road and your house getting stolen from beneath you.
That does happen, though.
It does happen, and there's some recent cases here in Kansas that have, that has occurred, so.
Is that a statewide service or just in here in Sedgwick County?
It's gradually moving to the other counties, but for right now, there's 23 that have signed up for it. I know in some states, they're making it mandatory for all counties to do it. So, I'm assuming that's going to happen here in Kansas. Any other questions?
So, this is strictly for Sedgwick County?
Yes.
So, if we own land in other counties, then we have to sign up for that county, too?
Yes.
That's great information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
I didn't know that was available.
I'm a notary.
Thank you.
Nice to know that.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item six is the consent agenda.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as amended with the year date.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to seven, business. First item is the 2026 pay scale and organization chart.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm bringing before you the 2026 pay scale and organizational chart. The pay scale includes a 2% cost of living adjustment. At the spring retreat, feedback was provided to us to remain conservative for 2026 while still recognizing the importance of supporting staff. After the retreat, we did face a significant health insurance increase. And while the city did do our best to absorb those costs, it still does have an effect on staff. So, I think it's important to make sure we note that. This could range anywhere from $500 to $2,000 due to remaining either on a top tier with higher premiums or moving to that second tier with some higher deductibles. Due to knowing these costs and that we personally, organizationally, have faced some significant increases, I do believe it's important that we move forward with this 2% cost of living pay scale. This also aligns with our strategic plan goal number seven, which is to attract, develop, retain high-quality employees with a key strategy to adjust our compensation benefits and perks to remain competitive and retain that institutional knowledge. I think something that I did always want to note is we sometimes are so busy doing our day-to-day. We are a growing city. Our job responsibilities don't necessarily change, but our workload absolutely has. A growing city equals more developments, more infrastructure to maintain, more water signups, and more permits being pulled and more patrol for our officers. Our staff has more on their plates than ever. We do recommend approving the 2026 pay scale and organizational chart as presented, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
It's the 2% COLA, basically, and then in addition, there's the, what did you say?
Yes, there's a 2.5% step increase that aligns with the annual evaluations that staff get throughout their year that usually aligns with either their date of hire or their promotion, like a promotion date.
That's somewhat merit-based, too.
Yes, that's merit-based. Yep, that's correct. You do have to meet your standards on doing your job. If you do not, there could be put in place like a performance improvement plan or some discussions before moving forward with that with that performance eval, and that lines with the merit increase.
And you told me if everybody gets everything, you said it was going to cost the city an additional 75?
Yeah, the cost of living adjustment is under about $70,000 a year for the whole organization.
Right, and that's in our budget, and that's what we budgeted for.
That's correct. This has been budgeted in our 2026 budget.
So, there are, it looks like 15 steps, right, on our pay scale? So, basically, every position at every step will get a 2% bump from what it was, and then as you progress.
Yep, and then as your eval date comes up, then you will, if you're meeting your expectations, you would then get your 2.5%. And that happens randomly throughout the year just with your date of hire or promotion date.
That starts in January.
Yeah, the cost of living adjustment would be effective January, so it would be our second payroll since that's what is inclusive of our January 1 date.
Unless you're at the top of your range, and then you'd only be subject to the cost of living adjustment.
We just reset the pay scale, so we don't have anybody who's maxed out, do we?
No, we don't have anybody at the top of our range.
We wanted to make sure of that.
Questions for anybody? Comments? Or they're simple, huh? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the 2026 pay scale.
A motion and a second to approve the 2026 space scale. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on, item B is, and boy, Eagle View Estate Sanitary Sewer.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'll refer you to the plat under this agenda item so you know what we're talking about. This is the new neighborhood that's going in directly south of the Eagle Lux condos or the garage condos over on 53rd Street. Back in August, you approved the sanitary sewer petition and bonding resolution for this in the amount of $347,000. On November 12th, we did open the bids for the sanitary sewer improvements with a low bid in the amount of $265,19780. The engineer's estimate was at $294,15150, so we actually had a win. Noah Construction submitted the construction contract in the amount of $265,19780, and Tom currently has that in his possession for review. So, we're recommending that construction contract with Noah could be approved for installation of sanitary sewer improvements not to exceed the bid amount. And the mayor to sign once the city attorney's finished reviewing the contract. I'll stand for questions.
This goes towards specials, right? I don't have any questions. Any questions from council?
No, sir.
Entertaining motion.
Move that we approve the construction contract with Noah Construction for the installation of the sanitary sewer improvements in the amount not to exceed $265,197.80 and authorize the mayor to sign in the contract once it's approved by the city attorney.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to approve the construction contract with Noah Construction for the installation of sanitary sewer improvements in an amount not to exceed $265,197.80 and authorize the mayor to sign the contract once approved by the city attorney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. I'll be back in the future for the water, streets, and stormwater.
Item three, request for Mays Police Interview Rooms.
Good evening, mayor and council. What you have before you tonight is a request for replacement of our current video system for our interview rooms and detective office. The system has been in place since on or before 2015, and it's coming close to its technology lifespan. We've had some issues where the audio and the video don't quite sync, and it's causing Detective Piper more working, copying those videos to get to the district attorney's office for prosecution. We have reached out to our body worn camera vendor, Axon. They supply our current body worn cameras, our evidence.com where we store our videos as well as our tasers because we knew that they had a solution. We explained our situation to them. They said there's going to be a price increase in '26. They said they would be willing to go ahead and order the equipment and then charge us a varied amount because we programmed this into the capital improvement project for 2027. And so, at the first year of the five-year contract, they will only charge us $1,000. The advantage to this system is we can electronically send that discovery to the district attorney's office through evidence.com where we don't have to make those copies onto thumb drives and take them down. So, if you are looking at our strategic plan, it falls under number six, safe and secure community, basically, and it falls under leveraging technology to improve efficiency. So, what we ask is that you approve us moving forward with this project. We won't be billed until 2026 for $1,000, and then the rest of the total cost will be broken down over the next four years of the contract. This is subject to review by the city attorney and his review of that, and we ask for the mayor to sign.
What's the total contract, then?
Total contract is going to be $60,192.
So, that'll be divided over the last four years?
Correct, and that cost will be $14,798.
Per year?
Per year.
You indicated to me today when I spoke with you that you had some concerns with your current system that you might lose evidence.
Yeah, that's the biggest concern. It's also problematic when the audio and the video don't sync up correctly. It's hard for the detective to review the videos and for the, whether it's municipal court or district court to get those synced up. So, many times, they have to make a transcription of the entire interview.
Do we foresee any issues of getting that $14,000 budgeted for those years?
Well, we haven't programmed for the amount in 2027. If not, we will have to find the money within our budget to make that happen. Axon does have a clause in their contract that we can opt out, and obviously, they'll come take their equipment back. But they will maintain and store, and all the videos will be stored in evidence.com, which is where we're storing all our body worn camera video currently along with all our photographs. A number of agencies within Sedgwick County have gone with this Axon program just because of the connectivity between the different products.
Well, this is something you were going to go with, but it's just kind of expedited itself because our old system is losing its ability to keep up with.
Our old system has video quality issues, but the main thing is, is the audio and the video aren't syncing up. And our concern is we don't want to lose any evidence that we, in the course of an interview, getting that to the prosecutors for prosecution.
Seems like a very important thing to have working.
Well, that was my attitude today, too, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the contract subject to city attorney approval.
A motion and a second to approve the agreement and authorize the mayor to sign the contract subject to the city attorney approval. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to reports. Mr. Police again, you get to stay up there. Isn't that amazing?
I get two in a row.
Awesome.
You're stuck with me twice.
Yep, awesome.
I do only have one thing to add to my monthly report is that we've given out a conditional job offer for, to an individual for one of our openings, and they have accepted. We're just working on a start date. They're currently certified, but from out of state, so they would go through the reciprocity program to get certified here in the state of Kansas. But it should be a pretty quick, easy transition for them. Their experience is about four years out in Pennsylvania. They're originally from this area. They went to Mays High School and are returning home to the family farm out in College. That'll stand for any other questions you may have.
You had any more, can you tell us anything good more about the flock cameras? Have they helped us in any other things than?
Oh, yeah, they've been able to identify a number of different suspect vehicles, and we've been able to track. We had a case a few months ago where actually the sheriff's department was trying to locate a homicide suspect. And one of our officers got on the flock, put the information in, saw the hits, not here in Mays, thank goodness, but were able to communicate that information. They were able to get the suspect stopped out in Butler County. So, it was a good coordinated effort between Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office, our officer, and then Butler County Sheriff as well.
Do you have internal policy on using flock data?
Yes. They, every time you get into flock, it has an audit trail, so we can tell who's getting in and for what reason.
I assume the policy's set up to make sure that it does not get missed.
There's no unauthorized flocking.
I'm sorry?
I said, there's no unauthorized flocking.
Correct. I would have phrased it differently, but that's correct. And basically, we have mirrored Wichita's policy since they were one of the first in the state to have flock. So, we don't have incidents like we've had in another city here in Sedgwick County where the officer was using it for nefarious purposes, shall we say. And they're no longer certified as an officer.
So does Hutch and Newton also? Ask for information on that also?
So they have access to our hit lists and our notifications, so if we were, and we have access to theirs as well.
Right.
So if somebody enters in a stolen vehicle in the flock, we'll be able to see where it hits. And such as the homicide case out in Sedgwick County, they were able to enter that information into flock, we were able to see it, and the officer started tracking what cameras they were hitting on. So it's very good at intelligent sharing, but that information only stays a certain amount of time.
Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Were you guys able to get to the bottom of the recent vehicle theft issues, not stealing of vehicles, but belongings out of vehicles that were occurring?
So we haven't been able to develop enough probable cause, but we have identified some suspects, and they were from Wichita.
Okay.
Southeast Wichita, but we haven't been able to coordinate enough to put a case on them, but we're still investigating.
And then my other question was, so the Mays School District sent out an email to all the parents about increased security measures that they're going to be pursuing at the schools, which some of that was security guards and locations and whatnot. I was just curious, is that going to have any impact on us? Is there anything we need to be thinking about with what they're doing there?
No, so the security staff that the school district has approved are going to be non-commission unarmed security. I was at the board meeting both times we presented security options to the school district. It's not going to affect our SRO program. The advantage is going to be is have an extra eyes for things going on, and the security staff will be able to enforce school board policy, whereas we enforce city and state laws. So they'll work coordinated together, but completely different roles. I think it's a building block for that layered security approach. I know that they're looking at a couple of other options as well to build that security up. One of them is related to camera footage. The state has allocated money to the Attorney General's Office for that project, and the RFP hasn't come out yet. So this will be the first step in their building block for that layered security approach.
Thanks. Thank you. That'll work.
Evening, Mayor and Council. I was going to bring it to your attention, but the gentleman earlier beat me to it, Tyler Road, been opened up today if you didn't notice, but.
I drove on it.
Old news, Nick.
What have you done for us lately? What have you done for us lately?
Anyway, I think they did a pretty nice job, so.
Yeah.
They actually completed it in pretty timely manner, given the condition of what the bridge was in, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add to my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
The only comment I've got for you is that your reports are very detailed, and I really enjoy looking at them, so thank you for that. Never had that before. Just saying. Guess that's a good thing. Must be doing something right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I do have one question.
Yeah, Ross got away.
So what was the demo at Foley Cat?
So they invite a lot of their clients and give their clients and their employees, their operators, opportunities to get in equipment they may not have operated before, such as mini Xs or skid steers, and it's also an opportunity for them to network and connect and potentially get other sales and that kind of thing, so.
You guys ran down to West Street then and looked at their stuff.
Yep, they ate lunch and jumped in a couple pieces of equipment for an hour or so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My report's pretty thorough. I'll stand for any questions that you may have at this time.
That's a new office.
Lonely.
Yeah.
Lonely.
We're going to get you one of those coffee mugs or whatever, so you're going to wind up downstairs pretty soon. Any questions from staff? Everything's going well so far? No problems? Your planning commission's doing well?
Yes, sir. Our new member was seated this month.
Okay.
Or last month, excuse me.
Yeah.
And she went really well.
Great.
We're fully staffed then?
Yes, we are.
Awesome.
Well, gee whiz, I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Looks like we're going to get an appeals case.
That's correct. I'm in contact with the agent for AT&amp;T that was turned down last planning commission meeting. He's supposed to submit his appeal to myself and buy in within 14 days of that decision, and he has yet to do so at this point. I anticipate receiving it in the next couple of days.
Thank you.
I appreciated in your report, kind of where you're headed with the reporting on the single-family and two-family structures, so just want to say thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Tom, anything legal tonight? Okay, we'll be talking to you in a little bit. Operations?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As always, your year-to-date Treasury report and cash and budget position are attached. Some things that I do need to talk about tonight, specifically our temp note 2025B, I believe it was two weeks ago, I brought that to you, with some issues that arose with bank qualified notes, meaning that anything over $10 million that we take out in temp note is not tax exempt anymore will drastically increase our cost of that temp note. So after looking at where we are at, we are going to push that temp note back to the beginning of 2026. So we are going to be able to make it through the end of the year, and we will push it back through to save some costs, because those will drastically increase, because they're not tax exempt after $10 million. And Mitch isn't here to give you more detail about that, but I'm sure I can get.
Is that the state that made that change?
I'm not necessarily sure, I just know that.
It's a federal, it's a federal law, and it's been around for a long time.
So in that case, can you just break it into two smaller temp notes?
We could, yes, but considering we could literally move it to our first meeting of 2026, to me, that takes out, if you did two separate ones, you're doing cost of issuance on two separate temp notes rather than just putting it all into one. And then also, this allows us to grab a few more bids before we go out for it. So after looking at some things, we're going to be able to make it, we're going to do it that way. So just a heads up that it'll be at the beginning of January rather than in the month of December. Additionally, our penny policy went into effect today, so I don't know if you guys seen that. We pushed it out on social media.
It's everywhere.
Yeah, we have it, we have the policy actually at the front desk. Tom asked us to do that, and then we have notes and things outside. So if anybody has any questions, they're more than willing to call, and we also have some stuff up on our website as well. And then also in some good news, we hired a utility clerk, and it's internal. Our current deputy clerk is going to move over and be our utility clerk. So that's exciting, it's a promotion for her. We're really excited to grow individuals within our organization, and I think it's going to be a great fit, and I'm excited for that. And also some good news, we've had 36 people sign up for e-billing so far, and we haven't pushed it on social media yet. So just from the note that we've sent out, you can do 36 times seven, that's about the amount of money we're going to save so far on postage, so it doesn't seem like a lot, but I mean, it's only been out there for two weeks, and we haven't pushed it on social media, so I'm sure once we put a link on social media, that'll be a lot more. So that's super exciting, so other than that, I'll stand for any questions.
That's good.
Alrighty.
Want to add anything?
I'll probably just highlight a few things on my operations report.
Sure.
First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me to go to Tampa for the ICMA conference. It was my very first one in 25 years of local government, and so I did find it was very useful. I had a great opportunity to network, but I sat through some really great sessions. Probably I'd say about interesting, Dr. Gao was there as well, and you know, I'd say there were more sessions about artificial intelligence than I would have expected, and that's really a trend everywhere, but local government, there's probably, if you go to the area where all the trade show was, I'd say a majority of everything is related to AI, and that's the world we're headed towards, probably even in local government. So there were a lot of sessions I attended on that, there were a lot of sessions that I attended, there were some on recruiting and retaining talent, and that's a big challenge for a lot of communities across the country that they're dealing with, and they talked a little bit about strategies and studies that they've done, and learned some valuable pieces there. Sat in a couple sessions about housing, unique housing approaches. Obviously, when you get into rural areas, you have a whole different dynamic of housing, and how you attract housing, especially in places where it's quite expensive. But sat in some really great sessions, I want to thank you for the opportunity to go to that. Otherwise, some of the meetings we've had, this between now and between the last time that we did our report, and now, we did sit down with our industrial group, and we'd like to do it more frequently, but we sat down and talked about energy reliability concerns that some of our industrial providers have. A lot of them have very sensitive equipment, so when the energy sags, they have energy sags that can cause issues with their equipment, and so we heard a little bit from Evergy, and we talked about some measures that can happen to hopefully preserve some of the concerns they have with equipment damage they've had from energy sags. And so we want to continue to follow up and make sure we provide good service to our industrial businesses, and if there's some ways we can connect them with some people that might be able to address some of the concerns, we want to continue to do that. We continue to talk, you know, as we indicated, we had a really good showing at our local console to talk about the Northwest Expressway. We have to continue that momentum and continue to work on that. We've got a number of meetings this week to talk a little bit about strategy going forward with the coalition group that we have for the Northwest Expressway, and also we'll be sitting in on a meeting with the South Central Kansas Transportation Coalition later this week. We, I sat in, this is probably, I think, our second meeting of the Coalition for Western Sedgwick County Cities. We went, I went to Cheney for that, and it's a very good group. We had, we discussed some pretty significant issues, including, you know, they had a recommendation for the Fire District Advisory Board related to services outside of the Sedgwick County Fire District. Obviously, a very big issue for us, because we are members of it, and so we started a good dialogue on that, and we'll continue to have that dialogue, I think, as we go forward, because a lot of those cities out there are not part of the Fire District, have volunteer services and things of that nature. So we started some dialogue there. We talked a little bit about the county's efforts last year to look at whether we have there's a more equitable way to allocate countywide sales tax, and I know Dr. David's worked with the county a little bit on that and continues to work on that, but that were, those are a couple examples of things we discussed. I think all the meetings that we go to, we try to, whether it's myself, or Joe, or Tristan, or Elizabeth, or, you know, police, the police department, or Public Works, we try to go to meetings that really add value, and I think attending some of those meetings is important. I spend a lot of time doing meetings, but I think they all lead to very valuable things, and so it's not just to attend the meetings, they do serve a great purpose. The Kansas Supreme Court, we were lucky enough to have them come here a case here at Mays South, and there were several of us, including council, that had a chance to go and listen to them talk, and so it was really, really cool to see that happen here in Mays. And we're working actively, putting together an agreement for purchase of a location and water rights related to municipal well sites, so we're continuing to work on that, and we, at some point, will be bringing before you some sort of an agreement if we can reach some level of mutual agreement with the individual that we were in discussion to purchase that from. Economic development, I might just hit on that. Joe, Joe's been doing a tremendous job, talking to different landowners, talking about different development opportunities in Mays. We've talked to several industrial, both potential and existing industrial companies about either expansion or construction, first-time construction and industrial park, and so we're working through a lot of those deals, a lot of those issues as far as our ARB applications go, and so we'll continue to, at some point, you'll see some of those come before you, but they've, you know, there's a lot of details you have to go through before we get to that point. I won't talk much about the financial management and budgeting, because Elizabeth talked about that. Yeah, I will go talk a little bit about our community events. We did have a very successful Halloween drive-through. I think more people than we've had ever, and part of it had to do with the fact we just about canceled because of weather, and when other people didn't, I think, when other people did cancel, we didn't, and so we had a really great turnout. I think they did have to give, they pretty much gave away all the candy that we had for the most part, because we did have a great turnout. And we look forward to the Christmas tree lighting here on December 7th, be from 5:00 to 7:00 at the amphitheater. We had really good turnout next, last year, I think we'll have similar this year, and I'll give a lot of kudos to the Mays Rec and to Tristan for all the work they've done to start putting that together.
That's on Sunday, the 7th?
Is that a Sunday? It is a Sunday, yes.
Yep.
And then, and then the last thing I'll just point out is the housing permits. You see, we're on, we're still on very good track here with 117 single-family, 53 duplexes, and 11 commercial, and, you know, a lot of those, we're working on a lot of street projects, so you're going to start to see more. That'll probably hit us next year as some of these projects finish up, but we're still, maybe not quite as aggressive as we were last year, but we do have a lot that are a lot that are being constructed, and I think you'll continue to have a pretty good year in 2026 as well, just how we know about timing of infrastructure happening right now. And I think that's about it. I did put, I think, third and fourth for your, I know Mitch pointed it out, but we're starting our first conference of planned public meeting on the 3rd, and Planning Commission Workshop on the 4th, so we're really getting into some of the discussions that we've had about housing types and things of that nature, but that's not exclusive to what's being discussed, but that'll be, we are trying to address that subject pretty readily. We're also meeting, we're having our meeting on the end of next week, or the 20th, it'd be the end of this week, where I'm actually, we're meeting with a lot of the suburban cities, the managers and planning staff from around, to kind of see what they're seeing as far as trends, because I think, I think a lot of cities are seeing the same trend in housing that we're seeing here in Mays, and so if we can come together and find some commonalities and look at policies that might be similar, I think we'd like to at least sit down and discuss those, what other communities are doing, and I think coming together and at least discussing could be helpful. That's what I got. Any questions on anything else I didn't talk about?
Yeah, just a quick question. I can't, you told me that the LED sign was going to start construction pretty soon, did you say that? Okay. Okay. Get what? So it's going to be quick? Okay, good. I'm excited to see that.
I just want to briefly comment on Nick's mentioning about attending SMA. I think that's really good, and I will continue to support him going to the.
Oh, sure. Goddard, Derby, El Dorado.
Andover?
Andover. Yeah, the managers from a lot of, it was, it was, oh, I opened it because it was my first time ever being there. So it was, it was a good experience. So I, I, I spent, I went to as many sessions as I could, really. I mean, it's about networking too, but you know, I, I, there were a lot of sessions that I, I had to make hard decisions over which, which different sessions to attend, but yeah, it's a lot of good ones. Thank you, Dr. G.
I think that's a good opportunity, not only for networking, also get new information to see how other cities, all of Mays are doing, you know, what is the new trend, what can be brought back to, to Kansas, to Mays.
The, the Planning Commission Workshop on the 4th, is there anything in particular that they're going to be discussing?
I'll defer to Mitch on that one.
They're going to be discussing Conference of Plan Land Use Map, things of that nature. We're going to review what the city brings to us and concerns and things like that. So that's pretty much it.
I think that the consultant will be kind of be leading that discussion to talk through all the pieces that we'll have to address and, and get any input from the Planning Commission at that point.
I'll be out of town on the 3rd and the 4th. I'd like to be at both of those, but that's good that we got those meetings going.
I'll be out of town too, myself.
So we had a lot of questions about the water and sewer rates as staff.
I actually just spoke if, with the front desk lady to see if they have any phone calls and they've said maybe one or two. So not very many is all, or not very many. We thought we'd have a lot more.
Right. Okay, thank you. Anything else, guys?
Yeah, I guess one other, I guess it's all, it's three questions in one, but I'm curious, the developer's agreement template and really just that one in the industrial IRB agreements. What are you looking at for that?
Um, we want to do a template for a development agreement, so it'd be something that we would do with any developer going forward. There's nothing earth shattering that we don't already agree to, but it's getting the developer to agree upfront to some of those things. And we're, we've been talking back and forth as staff. We sat down with Mitch Walters to cover some of those things. I've just had a lot of other things on my plate getting that in here, but we'd like to get that up and going potentially here in December, but you know, if we have, it could be January.
Is that requirements for those or more like a responsibility?
It would be covering things like, like financing, it could be aspects of financing, how they, some of it could be how they, we brought up some things like construction, like how you handle concrete waste and things of that nature that aren't really written out. They're in policies in one way or another, but it makes it very clear upfront that, you know, you guys are, you as the developers are responsible for some of these things. It's really just to cover, it's to get in writing so they understand they've signed off on this, that they under, that these are things they'll agree to. It's not thing, there's really probably nothing in that that we don't always already require them to do, but it gets it out in front of them. And then what, the other ones you asked about?
Uh, the other one was the IRB template.
It's actually not the template, it's the IRB agreements that we're working on.
I said template, it says agreement.
Yeah, so it's the, it's the two that I kind of mentioned somewhat that we're working on. But I don't know whether it'll be December 1st. We're kind of at the, we're kind of at the will of the companies to complete their, their applications and make sure we have our cost benefit analysis.
That's not a modification to what we do, it's a specific.
It's specific to those requests, isn't it? And then the construction observation agreement. One of the things we've talked about is doing, as we talk about construction observation, it's one thing that's kind of bothered me since I got here. We always had an independent company do construction observation, not the design engineer that the developer hires. And so what we're talking about is we put together an agreement, do we work with exclusively with company and we get a set price on doing our construction observation? And we have somebody independent from the, the design engineer doing some of these subdivision construction projects. So that's one of the things we're talking about bringing forth is a, is a agreement with a single person to do all the construction observation for all of our subdivision work. It's not uncommon, there's other cities, even in the Wichita area that do that. So that's what those, those are. I like to say that I'll have them December 1st, but I can't tell you for sure. Some of those might get pushed.
Thanks.
As good, we'll move on to council reports or any, we'll, we'll start, start to my left, Dr. Dave, you got anything? Other than what you've already done? Jeff?
Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody. It's coming right up. Outside of that, now I look forward to seeing folks at the tree lighting. We'll be there for that. That's not too far away either.
The 7th, I believe, yeah.
I was just going to mention, we did go to the Supreme Court, I did go to the Supreme Court luncheon that they held, and that was quite the, the thing to see how much security they actually have for those justices and stuff. It was quite the scene, but it was very well handled and I thought it was great. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving, on to the holidays.
Awesome. Alex? Congratulations to Jeff and Jennifer on the newly elected and thanks staff for all they're doing and I hope you guys.
What about Pat?
Oh, yeah. He didn't count. That didn't count.
Not enough ride-ins.
No, I didn't quite get there. And then I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving. Appreciate all the help. You too.
Kudos on the congrats and happy holiday. City Christmas parties during the day, you have a date set? We're going to do that again this year.
Oh, yeah.
What are we doing?
Wild lights again. You and your families that would, would like to come out to that, we'll have a night, we'll have the wild lights at the zoo again.
Oh, that thing like we did last year.
As well as the luncheon that we'll have here.
Okay.
That's here in this building.
Just one thing to add, just knowing other cities, what's going on, just feel lucky to be here in Mays. Have the great management.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Comes down to me. I have apparently made a mistake and I bought a plane ticket to be gone on the 1st. And I know he's going to be gone on the 1st.
You can have the mayor gone and one council member gone and we're okay.
All right, good.
As long as nobody else is gone.
All right. Just so everybody knows that two of the main guys aren't going to be here, so. I, I do want to wish Alex all the best. I know you're getting knee replacement and since I've done that, I wish you the best and I'll be thinking of you. As Nick said earlier, we have a busy week with the Northwest thing this week. I won't get into the politics of it, but it's, it's getting rather interesting. There's some things afoot. So we have two meetings this week for that. I have WAMPO tomorrow. And I think Friday we have another meeting with a developer. So it's, it's a busy week in Mays for meetings, I guess, right? So I too, I, I agree with you, Dr. David, this is a great city to work for. And I appreciate everybody that got reelected again because it's such a great council. We don't necessarily all see eye to eye, but we, we all respect each other and, and that's the main thing. And we've heard some stories from some other councils and we don't have those problems. Thank you all for running and I know you're not in it for the money. So thanks for getting reelected. That's all I got to say. So with that, we're going to go to executive session to discuss some things.
We would like to move that the governing body recess into executive session to discuss matters involving a non-elected administrative city employee pursuant to the statutory justification listed in KSA 75 dash four and three, one, nine, B1. The open meeting will resume in this room at 7:50.
Sure. I don't think I can take that one. Seven?
7:10?
7:10. I'll say it. We'll go on. And Tom, I think you're probably the only person I'd like to have in that meeting, if that's okay. Yeah, I was thinking about that, maybe that's probably a good idea. Tristan, yep. Let's do that.
Yeah, sure.[1307.95]
Yeah, sure.